Let's start with the legislative. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I will go off script a bit before we approve the last minutes. And let's welcome our UU member Jenna Ventulow. You may know her from, she's attended a few of these meetings. Jenna has a kindergarten and a second grader here. She's the steward president, so thank you for joining the committee. We appreciate your service.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The minutes from the last meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 7.
Seven.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, edits? All in favor?
I'm here, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the financial report. It is...
Steve, I'm here for this, yes.
Oh, right, wow, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's just a big fire.
So Deb's away at a conference, so I'm sitting in. I'm Stephen Emberco, and I'll take you over for Deb when she moves to superintendent chair. Looking at the financials for October 31st. Expenditures are well within the percentage spent as compared to budget for this year as compared to the previous years. The reports that Deb has put together are very nice because it shows you how much is spent as of October 31st for the past five years. And we're always within the 18% to 20% range. And this year, 18%, which is no longer than 20%. Encumbered, that's everything that's been encumbered for the rest of the year. That's what we think we're going to spend for the rest of the year. That gives us a 74% as compared to budget. The financials are very clean. Everything has positives and there is a negative balance. There's a rationale for that as we go through the year. We clean up those negatives, especially with other revenues coming in, other pieces of pie as they come in. So everything looks very good.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Good luck. Thanks very much. The next item on the agenda is communications.
So there are two. The first being the memo that went out regarding liaisons by town for this next budget year coming up. So I guess this is common practice where a couple people per town participate in a liaison to stay up with the new initiatives maybe for upcoming budget or how we're progressing. So I don't know if you want to discuss that or do we have your liaisons from past years? But we're looking for names. I don't know, I don't think it needs to be this meeting, but it certainly should be soon. And then there are meetings that you can all attend if you wish. And those are in full on the backside for FY '24.
All right. So liaisons on the board just?
Yes, to be a liaison.
They're looking for...
They're looking at the board on the board. To the left, right?
Right.
Oh, to come to this meeting.
I think that maybe, yeah, they're all presented for the left and right. Just go again and then get them.
And you know who that person is?
I'll cheer someone.
It used to be Mary Blanchard. The board's...
Any old years.
Yeah, nobody's kind of last few years. Was that? Yeah, I don't remember. It just sounded like you were correct.
Yeah. Well, maybe we'll get one this year.
They must watch it from home.
Maybe someone will surface this year, you never know. But anyway, we are looking for liaisons for that purpose. The second communication is certainly, as I'm sure you all heard on the news, is with respect to the mask mandate. That was, got extended till at least January 15th. And the commissioner's message was holiday season. We know that there's a new potential for 5 to 11 vaccines for 5 to 11, and that's up and running. So he wanted to give time for all of that to settle before lifting the mask mandate.
Do we have any updated percentages of vaccinated in that district?
You know, we do, and Erin usually has. I personally do not have that. But we are... Our... Oh, you do, from...
Department of Health.
Adult side or...
This is what Erin did. I have the numbers of Erin recorded at the...
Tantascu meeting, yes.
There's certainly not today.
Yep.
But they're all... Is that part of your survey? I can do it then. I'd love to.
All right. We'll say that. It's easier.
I can take it out. Is that just like a district or is it the whole year?
It's by town. It's town by town.
It's the town, yeah.
It's town by town, broken down 12 to 15 and 16 to 19.
Okay.
Fully vaccinated versus one dose.
Right, okay.
So...
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Rindfield ages... Do you want to just disturb or do you want to see everybody?
I was curious about Tantascu and then I was curious about, so they've...
So they're all Tantascu, actually.
Yeah.
Because, right, nobody will...
So the age group, that's what they are.
Yeah, so, all right, so Rindfield ages 12 to 15, fully vaccinated, 60%. One dose, 66%. Ages 16 to 19, fully vaccinated, 70%. One dose is 79%. Holland, 12 to 15, fully vaccinated, 44%. One dose, 45%. 16 to 19, fully vaccinated, 70%. One dose, 73%. Rookfield, ages 12 to 15, 45% fully vaccinated. One dose, 48%. Ages 16 to 19, fully vaccinated, is 60% with 61% having one dose. Sturbridge, ages 12 to 15, fully vaccinated, is 55%. One dose is 61%. Ages 16 to 19, fully vaccinated, is 76% and one dose is 79%. Wales, ages 12 to 15, fully vaccinated, is 68% when one dose is 70%. And ages 16 to 19, fully vaccinated, is 62% and one dose is 64%. That was as of, I don't understand. Probably about two weeks ago.
Okay, it's just like from the school or the dot mat dot gov?
This, I believe it's what's...
That's what's repelled for the correct.
I just, I just have a thing that's not that these numbers can be incorrect, but I've done research and so far, according to mat.gov, the whole population of Sturbridge has received, fully vaccinated is 1,444, whereas the first dose, everyone, one dose is 5,884, which breaks the total to 9,828 in the population of Sturbridge, only 9,125. Could bring that to some clarity?
Wouldn't that one dose be, that's a part of the subset of the fully?
Yes.
I don't know.
Yes, it is.
That's what I was concerned about. It has to be a partial dose and then first dose.
It has to be. So the one dose is included in the fully, yeah.
Okay. Okay. That would make more sense.
Yeah.
Because I was confused.
And align with those percentages. If you're saying 5,000.
Well, because everybody fully vaccinated, every single fully vaccinated, everybody is lower. The two together, most cases are over 100. So...
And thank you for having us. We should have brought them on.
You know, it's great, I don't care.
I will say though, I don't know if it's temporary. There is also a fillable. Basically, parents can go online instead of having to print and fill out the consent for vaccination. This is now fillable for, it's the English version. We don't yet have the Spanish version, but they can go online, fill in the actual text, in the text boxes, print it from that and just email it to the nurses. That's like the new protocol.
I'm sorry, for vaccination or for testing?
For, I'm sorry, for testing, yes. Consent for testing.
I'm a little worried there.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, the vaccination clinic is tomorrow, so, yeah, that's all.
That's got to be for age 18 or above, remember?
I think, I think it's 12 now.
Yes.
So parents said...
No, they have it come.
They have to come, okay.
I don't remember how many of your hands signed up. It's majority of staff who's in test meetings.
Okay.
Is that, is it in a bus or something or is it physically invisible? With the kids here to go during school hours?
No, after school, well, we'll bring in the preschool and junior high staff. We'll bring them in.
Any other, I guess we're still on the communications.
Yes, sorry.
No, that's okay. No, it was, it was good input and topical. Any other discussion on the communications?
Thank you. Move on to the principals report. This is probably the easiest.
So student showcase, although we don't have students, we have student work over here. We will have students, I don't know for December, but definitely January. So those are Miss Tech students. Character pumpkin, so they read a story and then have to design or paint a pumpkin based on the story and they're writing summaries of the books. So thank you to Miss Tech and the students.
Thank you, it's so cute.
Alrighty, so enrollment. Our numbers were pretty stable up until November 1st. We actually have five new students in various stages of enrollment. Most of them starting Monday, this coming Monday, so excited for that. Recognition, I just want to send out a huge shout out to the entire PTO that worked on the book fair, but particularly to Michelle Phillips, who's been running the book fair for a number of years. Under these unique circumstances, they were able to, sales totaled nearly $15,000 in two days compared to five to six days that they would run into, had some great work on their part. Todd Montgomery, who is a previous purchase student, he's at Tantascu Senior. He did his Eagle Scout, he's an Eagle Scout candidate. He did his project on our trailer in Mapp and he created an open space classroom similar to the one that they have in the junior high. Very proud of the work that he's done and I have asked him that, and I'm just hoping that he would come and sort of present his project to while I'm here. Very much so.
Is that, I'm sorry, intro, is that where some of the teachers are taking the kids back to those that?
Yeah, and one of the teachers is actually, is this Molly, who's doing it with her library students.
And then I'll come to us and talk.
You can talk. Through the chair.
Many of the classes did go two through six. Some of them did not, and then I was like, I owe you because weather and others. And then I interrupted my people. So we, so like, we will... No, not today. So, we'll see. Maybe we'll have next other...
We might have a test as well.
Yeah. But it was nice. I did. Thank you both.
So, yeah, I'm assuming that I'm... The spring 2021 M-PAS student reports were sent home via mail last month. And shortly Assistant Superintendent Jody Barasa will provide the detailed report on the results. Fall parent teacher conferences will be held remotely on Tuesday, November 16th. That's the early release from 1 to 3. And then Thursday, November 18th, from 4 to 6. My conference time app is open. Professional development, we rounded out a very busy month of professional development last month. Thank you, Jody. The most recent was based on the STAR testing workshops where teachers were, did a deep dive into the types of reports available and how they can better utilize the tool. And then on the early release day on the 27th, literacy initiatives for the focus. Health and safety, as you saw from the memo, the mask mandate has been extended for at least January 15th. And as we discussed, Burgess in collaboration with New Mass will host a COVID-19 vaccination through all booster clinic here at the school tomorrow. Seven eligible students will be able to participate. Okay. I, just on a really positive note, and I do want to thank Mary Valesa for all of her help. We will be opening up the lower gym to rent basketball starting Monday. Oh, yeah, okay. We don't think we can pull it off. Looking at Monday through Friday, 5 to 9. Monday through Friday, 5 to 9. Oh, yes. Possibly 5 to 8:30 just because it's younger kids and we want to have them out till 9:00 and 5:00. Right, not until night. And then Saturday and Sunday. Yeah, we're thinking maybe this Saturday, depending on the numbers. We're starting off with one through, I'm two through, no, one through six. One through six. Just Burgess kids to start. And then they'll press the other lands and probably be able to... There you go, there you go.
I have a question, if I can start. The, on the health section, it mentions a clinic as well in December. Can you tell me, how is that different than what's being offered tomorrow? It says the clinic for students aged 12 to 18 is scheduled for Friday, December 15th.
On my report?
Yes.
It didn't help by, oh, but that helps, right. And so that's supposed to be November 15th.
It is, okay.
And it should be 12?
I didn't know. I vaguely remember her saying 5 to 11.
There is a possibility from 5 to 11, but that's still in the works.
Okay, but that was then.
For tomorrow?
No.
Okay. In December, but that's, that's a different...
Oh, different. How are those things determined, that we can sponsor that or not? I'm curious, I don't ever remember how they, other than the dentist's bus that comes when they do vision. I'm just, it seems to be...
Quite frankly, we're dispensary sites. So annually, you mentioned, some of you may have experienced it a few years ago. We actually participate in an annual training in which the Board of Health goes to school. We had one incident where it was a parent teacher conference early release and I thought it was going to take a few minutes to do this walk through. And we had parents walking in, we had all sorts of people from the building going through. But we are one of the...
Or the town, I'm sorry, is that what you said? So...
So this is a good to add, everybody in the town. Not this one.
This is just for following, people who are interested.
You're sort of like our blue shop that we do where we send one parent down. This was opened up to the children, to the child. Okay.
So the parents coming in after hours. Any other questions on the principal's report?
So we'll move to the presentation.
Yes, oh, yes, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would want to present this. Where you go, yeah.
I'm thinking all that work now.
So, so in your packets, we certainly gave you the survey results for last year's testing. I'm going to give some history just for a point of reference because we were here without testing. The next generation test started for Math and ELA in 2017. So last year was its fourth year of testing, but without the 20 year. So it's really only three years. So we think it's four years of testing, but it's really only three. Because, and because of, and the state actually set up an accountability system that is not reported in this because we don't have last year's test, or 2020 test results. So the accountability system is actually meant to compare how well schools do from one year to the next. So we're actually going to compare how Burgess did last year to 2019 instead of 2020. So just to be clear, even though the accountability's not here, we would think that in the future it will come back up as long as testing continues. So I just want that out there to know that it's not stated here, but likely coming back at some point. So, and what the accountability system did after comparing year to year data is to determine whether a school district is actually needing some form of help, intervention or assistance. So in past years though, Burgess has never qualified. So and the scores this year are very good. So I don't see any changes because of COVID. I can say there have been, although we were in hybrid model last year, you can see in the first bullet, there are 397 students tested in person and 55 remotely. Although the environment was a little bit different, the test questions were the same types of questions. Like there were multiple choice, short answer and essays. However, students only tested in one session versus two. And so some students, just by circumstance or just by circumstance, got session one. Other students may have gotten session two. And when you look at test development, session one tends to be like that warm up and then session two tend to be a little bit more critical thinking skills. So that may have had an impact on performance for students. We don't know, we'll know that in years to come. And I will also say that third grade and fourth grade, when it's typically just third grade, were the first times, they took it for the first time, third and fourth grade. So there's limited exposure as well. There's also no growth and we'll get to that in the future, in subsequent pages. So overall, the bullets of the positive trends, the target for all students is 500, which that is the meeting expectations category. There's a category higher than that for exceeding. And you'll see on the next pages that we do kind of merge those categories because those, once they meet that target, anything over is great work. But we tend to focus on the students who aren't exceeding the target. So or provide enrichment for those who are. So Burgess by that target of skill score, grade three, tested exceptionally well in comparison to the state. In both math and ELA, I give the points there, they were five points higher for ELA and then math, they were 1.1. Now, as you go, you have to see that that actually increases. And I would suspect it's because kids have had more experience with the test. In grade four, they were six points higher in ELA and eight points in math. In grade five, 6.2, 6.2 points higher and seven points higher in math. And then in grade six, 16.1 points higher and 17.8 points higher in math. So really good trajectories there, moving up through the grades. And then if we look at a couple of subgroups, students with disabilities also higher than the state in ELA and in math. And then economically disadvantaged, also higher. So very good positive trends on that page. To be able to put all that at the beginning is very good. So there's some target areas, but not a lot. Now, if you look at the second page, this gives like historical trend data and we can look at historical trend data three ways. We can look at it year to year, which is what the state accountability system allows us to do when compared, from year to year. We can compare cohorts, that's the same group of kids from one grade to the next. And we can also compare to the state in Union 61, all noted on this page. Look at some trends. There are four categories, like I said, once they meet the meeting and exceeding, then they've exceeded the target score. The partially meeting and the not meeting of the two lower categories. So if we look at year to year data for grades three through, just pay, just look at three, just to start. It's a negative trend because you can see that 2018, 19 and 21, especially from 19 to 21, there's a drop of 11 percentage points. In Burgess, that's quite a bit of students for 11 percentage points. So, and then their needs, their partially meeting has increased and their not meeting has increased. So naturally, that's a negative trend. We don't like to see data go in that direction from year to year. If you look at four through six though, they stayed fairly consistent over the three years. And again, we're comparing different groups of students. So that's actually really good. That even though it's different groups of students, the data looks pretty consistent. Meaning, if you look at the same trend from 19 to 21, they're all in the 60s. You know, one, two percentage points, that's a, could be a student, you know, or change in class size. I mean, there's a lot of variables there, so decent. And that's the same for grades five and six. Fairly consistent would be a good trajectory there. We can look at a cohort group. There's only two cohort groups we can look at, which would be our current seventh graders, those sixth graders who have moved to, moved on, and your current fifth graders and now, I'm sorry, and your current today sixth graders. So we'll look at that. If you start at grade three year 2018, with your, I'm sorry, does...
You, you have a packet?
I do not get one, no.
We have an extra packet, that must be for you.
I'm to Cal.
I'm so sorry.
I've been listening, so.
Yes, I know, and I, sometimes when you listen to numbers, you actually... I thought somebody may have. So, so cohort, if we start at grade three, 2018, 63% of that group was meeting and exceeding. If you jump then to 2019, because they would have been in grade four, 62%, again, fairly consistent. And then jump from 2019 to 2021, meeting and exceeding, 68% do you see the cohort group. So it's really nice to see groups of students stay consistent even in tumultuous times, right? Or different learning environments. Our current sixth graders would be, start at grade three, 2019, 72% meeting and exceeding. Jump to grade five, 2021, 59. So there's a little dip from that fourth, missing that fourth grade year of full in person, right? It's not hard, kids are resilient. We know with good practices, teaching practices in school, that we will likely just move back, you know, move back up. But there is certainly a dip in the sixth grade for right now. And then you can see the differences between Union 61 and state. On this page, all grades exceeded the state in all grade levels, so that's really good. And on page three. So I did a little digging, in September of 2021, the state press released, set out a press release and revealed an increase in math gaps as compared to ELA gaps. Well, I'm going to show you how they got that. And so just with one grade level, and it is very consistent with all the other grades. If you look at the difference in grade three between the 219 score and the 2021 score, there's a difference of 11 percentage points. If we go back to grade three, 219, ELA, 219, there is also 11 percentage points. But it gets, it gets better in grade four. In grade four, the difference from year to year, 2019 to 2021, is 31 percentage points. But for ELA, it's only, it's actually plus two. So that's where they get the gap. As they say, overall, kids achieved better in ELA than they did math. That is still the same for Burgess as well. So that's another comparison point that just brought to the surface, just to see if the trajectory was the same for us as well. For mathematics overall, grades three to five, the year to year trend was a negative trend. Meaning, there were less meeting and exceeding students from year to year than there were in past years. And then you're not meeting and partially meeting are increasing. So, and then in grade six, very consistent and very strong data. Typically for achievement, we want to hit a target in the meeting and exceeding group of 75... of 75% or higher. So that's for achievement. So very strong in grade six last year. We get some work to do in some other grades, but again, you know, I think some of it is exposure to the test, you know. And right, different learning environments too, as well. That was.
Especially for math, you know, you think about kids probably still reading, still doing things ELA and the math just really need that hands-on explanation. I know, I did a terrible job explaining math with my kids when they were old. So how I used to do it. We carried a lot of ones during the pandemic. I liked it, so it's okay.
Yes. So if you turn to page four for science. Now, the first year of testing for the next generation test was in 2019. So what you're seeing in 2019 is actually true to the, is will be the baseline. But because accountability doesn't start, it doesn't even exist in science really because there's no year-to-year data, the only testing grade five. But again, if we look at achievement of being a target score of 75% of our population, it's low. It's some work to do. So that's achievement. And then the other area of, for accountability or just a comparison is student growth. And student growth is compare students to their peer groups or their academic peers. And what that means is they take the same grade of students with the same history, test history, and compare that group of kids to each other. So I have color codes on this page, but the color codes on page four actually go with page five. So if you look at grades five and six, now, I didn't say all students. I said grades five and six because growth only works when they have data from the previous year. Both grades three and four did not. So they're not part of the growth model. They will be, though, this coming year. So our target score here is 50 SGP for growth. So in some areas, for instance, grade six ELA exceeds that. That's great and all the others are below. But a healthy range for growth is anywhere between 40 and 60. So we're not too far off the mark.
In typical times, it would be 50. But actually, the state has made, adjusted the SGP because of the times.
Yeah, so that's why we say a good, healthy range is from 40 to 60. So, but we put it. And then there, if you look on the next page, page five, the color code. So the red, I'll read while you're looking at the chart. Red is grade six. The light yellow is five and six. And the gold is grade five. So in all, for ELA, we're certainly above. We want to get close, as far up in that right-hand corner as possible. And we're making some good gains there. We're definitely above the state in both achievement and SGP. For both math and ELA.
State's the star.
The state's the star, sorry. So that just gives a little visual of where we're heading. Any questions with growth? On page six, the last data entry basically just shows the trajectory of grade six over the years. Even though grade six had a hybrid school year in 2021, you can see that their total meeting and exceeding percentiles is fairly consistent. In 2018, if we add the blue and the green together, it's 58%. In 2019, it's a total of 62%. And in '21 is 68%. So fairly consistent, nothing alarming. And in mathematics, in 2018, it was 74% total for meeting and exceeding and 73 in 2019 and 70 in 2021. So good trajectories there. Now, I'll pass it over to Kathy for improvement opportunities.
As we had discussed last month at the meeting, just remembering that when the advice from the state was to be careful when looking at individual children's scores. And a lot of it had to do with what Joey said about, you know, your kid may have taken section, you know, session two with another child's obsession on and historically, the sessions do look different. And just for a whole multiple reasons. What I'm going to go through are a lot of improvement opportunities that are either already completed or are in progress. So as we do all the time, we identify the students at all performance levels with particular attention given to the student's scoring below the 500-point threshold. Perform item analysis on all assessments and identify areas of strength and weaknesses. Analyze written response and provide opportunities for students to write across the curriculum utilizing M-PAS-like scoring methods. Provide support to students demonstrating need based upon multiple measures. We don't just use M-PAS as a measure to determine if a child needs additional support. We look at our benchmark assessments, our screening, our unit assessment, and teacher observations. We are working to improve what's called our student support team, the SST team, which is designed to assist teachers in the identification of students requiring support and the steps that we take in order to secure that support. We will monitor the multi-tiered system of support to ensure the integrity of core instruction. So we have blocks throughout the day, grades one through four at this time, in which children could receive extra support in the area of reading or math that is not coming out of the core instruction time. Providing students with multiple opportunities to develop technological skills, particularly those required online assessments. And we are keeping exploring, continue to explore opportunities for after-school and vacation.
A lot of these tasks are so much to tell there, I appreciate.
It's much detailed, not six times. That's fun.
I need a whole course on how to explain the scores. Does anyone else have any questions on the M-PAS results? Who's for us? Are you on deck for superintendent's report as well?
I am, I am. Is it? Very simply, superintendent's report, Dr. Nozak wanted me to thank all of you who attended the retreat on October 23rd. It was a great day. And at the end of the day, there was mention of getting groups of people together to look at a strategic plan, which these documents are in your packet. They're bit dated and it's time we actually come together to update what we had. So there's more information to come. I don't have any other details, just to keep it on your radar, to say that work is coming our way. And then the second note is that there's a joint meeting on November 16th. It'll start at 5:30 for our district improvement plan presentation before the joint meeting that I believe will start at 6:00 or shortly thereafter. But those agendas will come as well.
We are up to public access. We have some public here.
For any of us to speak?
Right, for public access.
Definitely surprised that I'd like to speak.
Please identify yourself and.
My name is Susan Shea. Been a resident of Sturbridge for the last six years. And I come here tonight as a concerned citizen for the children of the world. I have a question. Do you know, do you guys know what protection these masks offer the children? Can you tell me that?
Zero.
Thank you. Do you know what protection the children being vaccinated gives them? Zero.
No, I'm sorry.
It is zero. I brought a pamphlet that I created today. And it's put together, I'm talking shaky because I'm so impassioned about this. So my voice is shaky. A friend of mine sent me yesterday a link to a symposium that was given October 12th. It was called Rational Responses to Pandemic Challenges. There were professionals there about masks, about vaccinations, about, my doctor was there presenting. His name is Dr. John Davis from Wilbraham, Massachusetts. He's a direct primary care physician and he has been treating COVID patients for the last couple of years. He has treated well over 200 COVID patients and not a one of them has died. In this pamphlet, I'm going to hand this out to everybody in the room tonight. It'll give you just some slides that talk about masks and what their effectiveness is and it's not what they're not. And then there's a whole lot of slides about vaccine data, data in other countries, data around the world, data in the United States. And to further educate yourselves on this, if you will allow, take the time and tune into this symposium that's available on YouTube. There are six segments to it. It's well over, it's probably over six hours of your time. I've listened to probably 70, 75% of it and gained a lot of confirmation of information that I've been reading and hearing over the last several months. And also, a lot of new information is there. So I'd just like to hand this out to everybody tonight before you leave. But I would think that all of you in your jobs here, including all the staff of these schools, should have the answers to the questions of what are the masks doing as you continue to keep the kids in masks. And you should also have some real answers from some real doctors and some real professionals. One of the very best to refer to is Dr. Peter McCullough. He's an internist and cardiologist, written several, several peer-reviewed papers, very well respected in the medical community. And also is a doctor who has treated COVID. He's been on the front lines of COVID from the very beginning of it. They've come up with a therapeutic that's worked. He does say now that the vaccine is absolutely useless. And it's really time for people to tune in and start understanding a little more of what's really going on before we lead these kids tomorrow down the street to getting the jab.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. I appreciate your input. Challenging times and we certainly all don't agree with what's going on. Unfortunately, you know, the, the C and D.
I'd like to say one more thing. The other night, I was at the, at a meeting and we met one of our representatives. And he had said that as a school board, you don't necessarily have to have your policies match up with, say, the, is it Desi? Or the other people. And it's going to be real easy for you guys to want to follow that because, wow, they give you a million three a year. How do you walk away from that? But are you really going to sell out your kids for money? Do you think you could just tighten things up and not sell them out and maybe start saving a few before it's too late?
Thank you.
Okay. Done.
Any other public access?
I would just offer, I don't think it's fair to ask our school committee to become medical professionals.
They don't have to. I'm not a medical professional.
Oh, I, I am. I am. I'm actually a pediatric pharmacy specialist. So I don't want to bring that argument here, but I think we should just let them do their job as protectors of our children in education.
If they are making a decision about children being required or not required to wear masks, if they're part of that decision, they have to know what those masks will do. They don't have to be a medical professional. They can get the advice from these medical professionals and more.
Thank you. Any other public access? We will move on to the subcommittee reports. Let's see, a joint meeting, cover that. Skills USA World, we had a, I don't know if anybody has seen it, but we had a student at Tenth House will win the national competition for carpentry, which he was eligible to go to the world competition in his particular specialty, which is carpentry. But unfortunately, this year, there's no carpentry, I guess they didn't choose you here, but. I know, kind of a bummer, right? I know, we finally have this kid who's this amazing thing. They have opened up in-person dining, so all of the kids that are in culinary can finally start, they had like over a year off. And they can finally, it's not open to the public. I believe it's just teachers at this point and they're hoping, you know, no surprise. No surprise, which is a sad, sad thing because that student is spectacular.
Second time I've heard of him.
Very good.
They were.
Mary has never stopped talking about. They were granted to the December meeting and it would be when they announced the superintendent award winners and his free.
That's amazing.
Very good. The Home Depot has donated five-gallon buckets for drumming lessons for the kids. They were having, at the time, actually that night, they were having a fundraiser at the junior high. Their student council, they are trying to find ways to make some money. They were doing a $10 pumpkin decorating event. Let's see, we have a new officer at the high school. He was at the meeting, Officer Nick Margarosian. I'm not sure if I butchered that name or spelled it right.
Very well.
And let's see, we are having, we did have, actually, I think it was a few nights ago, the National Honor Society had their in-person induction, which is nice. Because it was virtual the year before, which isn't that fun. Somebody participated in that and watched her dog do it. Concerts are in-person as well. We got a guidance report, which was fantastic. We have a new head of guidance. I brought it in case anybody wanted to look at it. It's covering last year, the class of 2021. There are afters, high school plans, and how many are going to college versus, you know, four-year versus, two-year versus technical school, military, gap year. And then they've got the state spread where all the kids are going. And then for the first time ever, we got places where our students applied and were accepted. And there was some unknown, which I guess they're going to try to clean that up. But also where normally in the past, you would get the one K sheet where it was basically accepted and attending. So this, I just think is interesting that we kind of see, you know, where we're applying also. And let's see, that Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving Day game has been moved from Thanksgiving to the night before. They're having a Hall of Fame award ceremony in the cafeteria beforehand. And then I think they're going to announce those, those winners on the field right before the game starts. So no more traditional Thanksgiving morning game. Let's see, then I have the vaccinations and that was it. Thank you. Do you have any questions here? Do they know what, how new staff are vaccinated? We do not have that information. I'm sure there's got to be a way to obtain it anonymously. I think if, I assume it's volunteered. If teachers want to volunteer that information, but I don't believe it's tracked. I don't know. Does it make a big difference to hit 80% if you, if teachers could figure, they can figure out how to do it? Yeah, I mean, to be honest, the numbers they had, they did mention that they have kind of stagnated. So they don't foresee this year hitting 80%. So they don't perceive this year hitting 80% unless something was to change. But they kind of, I think, just trickled up from what they were appealing here. And I mean, at this point, if you're, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it.
This, we are on to unfinished business.
I don't know if that we're going to be able to do it rough at tonight. I was expecting to talk to Deb, see if she got a hold of Jeff Bridges or Butch Jackson about the box trailer.
Yes, I know we're working on that right now. And we thought with that is to be able to buy out the existing lease. We need to get some numbers together, so we'll wait to hear back. But it's a conversation that we tend to...
Yeah. Do you know if the estate company has been responsive? Because I know that before they haven't.
We spoke with, and forgive me for the name.
No, I understand. I know you're on here. I didn't put you on the spot.
I remember the names, but she's the town accountant. And so she was getting that together. They have been non-responsive, but we're trying to push them because we need to be able to do something quick.
Yeah, I just, my inclination for that was when I stepped into that ocean back in August, was, you know, Butch Jackson does so much for the schools, and he had just finished doing the sidewalk. And so it was something that they needed. And so that was my inclination, like, okay, you know, one can help the other at that point. But by the time January comes around, $14,075 will be out of our enterprise after the town already spent $33,780 on the trailer. Total, up to January 22, it's going to be $47,855 in renting an asset that we will not own at that point. So that's why I just wanted to follow up. Yeah, because we're coming down to the 20th. So I just wanted to question from that. And then my other unfinished business was the parents' volunteers who's probably coming back into the school.
So yeah, the decision was made at the last leadership meeting to stay the course at this point in time. But as we open up to wreck basketball and we're bringing people into the building, we will loosen it up. I mean, it will look different. It's not because we're not going to be working in the classrooms with children, but we can absolutely utilize the help in the front office or in other places.
May I ask what criteria or threshold we're looking to meet to have, you know, parents or seniors on basketball?
Ability of the health office to do contact tracing. Don't put additional pressure on the health office at this point.
Right, I have, I have.
But if we all have masks on, what's the point for contact tracing at that point? Because we're not getting lunch with them or... According to Dessie's guidelines, if you have masks on, you're traditional, you need to contact trace, so. So it's kind of things like that.
Is this something that we, that administration, leadership team has done?
We're revisiting it every month. I think that the idea is to have a collective Union 61 decision. Because we are one. I mean, we're five, but we are one. And other schools' capacity to support that is different than what we're just assuming. So as Mary finished, has the conversation in regard to wreck basketball, you know, really got drilled down to what is the largest capacity as far as like custodial support and things like that, whereas some of the other towns may not be able to do it. So we're moving in the direction of making more individual school decisions. But up till this point, it's been, you know, fine. But how come the National Honor Society, we have things in person, they can have craft fair, they can do all this outside stuff without vaccinations, when it's supposed to be still? I have parents in my neighborhood who have never been inside a virgin in two years. They've never seen their kids' teachers' faces. The school, the high school opportunities are just starting. Those haven't happened in the past. Those are just beginning. And the capacity of them to separate and distance as carpenter, they won't be have their purchase. And the children here are primarily vaccinated. So I think that those are part of the decision-making. You know, concert piece is challenging. If you've ever been to a concert, you're at large. This auditorium is jam-packed, I mean, almost to the legal limit. So, you know, we're working towards it. We are taking steps and trying to bring people in as safely as possible.
About immune business. Anyone have immune business? The plexiglass barriers in lunch. If those are up, do those prevent direct contact? Someone is positive? Lisa told me that the only positives are coming out of the cafeteria. Some kids have plexiglass barriers in front of them.
Primarily in that space where there are plexiglass barriers or the children who are sitting next to each other. So are we saying that the plexiglass barriers provide a barrier? And so if my son is dealing with one in front of him, if someone three feet from him does not have one and is positive, is my son then considered a contact? I'm not sure how this is running that particular contact. She's doing the side-by-side without them at three feet, which is more of a problem there than it is in here. We haven't had a lot of point of issues in this space because of the distance, the gym near side-by-side. Because I would argue that if the plexiglass barrier does not provide any type of actual protection, then we should remove that.
But that's not in any guidance or in Dessie. And I mean, that was just a, I can't remember how those came about or why.
Initially, they were. After, right, the guidance. And Dessie actually does give latitude as to, you know, what you feel is the best situation. So when you're looking at spaces and when you're looking at situations, you have to realize you have 120 students in this space and be side-by-side. So as we sit here today, the guidance says we have one close contact.
And so when you say there, is that the gym?
Gym, because they're on the path, they're side-by-side.
I guess, are we asking if that can be something that's looked in? I mean, I would think from a janitorial standpoint, it's one less thing to clean. And just from a social standpoint, it does seem a bit prison-ish. Any other immune business?
All right, I have one more thing. So I'm not sure if everyone's aware, there are several lawsuits against Jeff Riley and Dessie in their pandemic court. So I would like to propose a, some type of vote today that says when, at some point, it comes down from the court or from Jeff Riley, also a member, that we don't have to wait for the next school committee meeting. We have a vote on record that says when we are allowed to give parents the choice to mask their children or not, then this is how we see it. Does that make sense? So if we hit 80% or if Jeff Riley's court case, you know, goes against him, they offer some kind of temporary injunctions, then we're already on record that said if that happens, then parents can either choose or not choose to mask their children.
From a procedural standpoint, is that something that we have to, is it something that we have to consider for agenda item for an immunity? Something to oppose?
Are you possibly able to hear from anybody? I hope everybody can. Vote after that, because we are representing citizens. Personally, I got time. When I read to you, somebody sent a tab in here and says that, you know, they really feel unsafe, then I think that has to be taken into consideration, no matter what personally I think about it, who I feel. So I'm actually not going to vote until we have some sort of a public hearing.
And we'll be able to, the only thing you can do at this point is say, take a vote to put it on the next agenda.
I would just hate to say, say December 15th, we hit 80% in the school, and then we have to wait until the next meeting. So I know it takes some time to get anything voted, so.
So it sounds like we want to take a vote to say that that is something that we will put on the next meeting agenda?
That's what you can do.
But this, I'm sorry, we just get a vote to put it on the next meeting agenda? And if it passes, are we going to request a public hearing through the TA? Or how is that?
No, by placing it on the agenda, for the next agenda, it creates that public meeting access. So when the agenda is published, people will know they can come, they can do whatever.
So the public hearing would be the next schedule?
Exactly.
But there are different, we would have to schedule, we always like, we'll break for a public hearing and have it, right? I mean, when we do budgets of public hearing and when we hear about school choice, it's a separate time, and it's a separate forum. Whereas we have public access here, and you're allowed, what, I think, two minutes? Or there's like, there's rules in place. Whereas a public hearing, I think, you can hear from everybody as long as you want.
Well, I can hear from anybody in the place.
Yeah, no, agree that you don't want people, but it is, it's a separate thing. Like, I would leave. So I feel like we would maybe look into having a public hearing at like, in the past, we've broken for a public hearing and people can't get here for 5:30. Or we do a public hearing at 5:30 with the meeting at 6:00, in which we would vote on...
Put away to the talk place with the 5:30.
Right, or you start a meeting and then...
Then we read the paper.
Right. Exactly. The whole thing to be, to, we try to schedule meetings. Should the regulations change, we try to schedule meetings.
Right. Say, if people are high, 80%, then what? Then they have to wait for the next.
Well, if you get to 80%, then you need to, you need to apply.
It'll wait.
Stay, right. And then they give you the date.
And then you have to...
And then the school committee has to... Right. But we've generally been able to have emergency meeting fairly quickly. I think you would all, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think if there were, if there was a change in the regulations, I think maybe willing to make it.
Other communities have done that.
It may be an easier method.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know how many of us worked sometimes.
Yeah, as you can tell, we're not, sorry, that's fair on the public hearing.
So we'd be saying that if there was, if we were to get the implication from Dr. Nozak that we've hit 80% and that she would be applying, so that would be an automatic request to labor? Or if the mandate were to change, then we would assemble for an emergency meeting that would include a public hearing to say that we are supporting labor or not?
I don't know. You don't need both? Public hearing and vote for regulations change. Okay. You just need three days, correct? For the meeting, that's the law. So it would be 72 hours.
I was just wondering, like, other districts that have, and I know Hockington had a, they had reached the 80%, but they went with some sort of a three-week trial. I just didn't know how did that get, you know, decided versus if you just applied for the waiver, you would think it's just a choice. Why did they have that additional stipulation? I don't know. Or public access.
And I follow, so, but we can certainly put it on the agenda to discuss that process.
Yeah, let's do that.
So I would say we would vote. We need to...
I would say we put on the new business the process for potentially the emergency meeting or waiver application for any COVID-related updates.
Yeah, we have unfinished business in the night.
Yes.
Who's new tonight?
There.
Okay.